Good evening, welcome to the February 7th, 2016 meeting of the Millis School Committee. I will announce by saying immediately being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 on Comcast Channel 8 over Horizon Channel 37. We begin with the World Club Bowl to my left Denise.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
John.
Present.
Steve for representant.
Here.
Sue for representant. Jody, has anybody signed in for open session?
There is not.
Alright. Then we will go right to action items and we'll take the concussion policy first.
Mr. Chair, we have, the laws have changed and our last concussion policy was and it could approve in 2012. So the, a group of our athletic trainer Jamie Farias who is here tonight, school nurses and athletic director have worked on this to make sure it complies with the new regulations and revised it and it has also been reviewed and revised by our school attorney. So I think it is very, very complete and accurate and well considered.
I will take a motion to either do a first reading or waive the first reading.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Colonel.
I make a motion that we waive the first reading of the Millis Public Schools concussion policy 5 dot 11 dot 3 dot 2.
Second.
Anyone detect it? All those in there?
Alright.
The motion carries and we can do the second reading.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Colonel.
Let me make a motion that we do the second reading of Millis Public Schools concussion policy 5 dot 11 dot 3 dot 2.
Second.
Alright, I'll start. Millis Public Schools have developed this policy to address the prevention and management of head injuries and concussions in students participating in extracurricular athletic activities. It is in compliance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 111, Section 222 and accompanying regulations 105 CMR 201 dot 000. Head injuries and concussions in extracurricular athletic activities. Definitions. For the purposes of this policy consistent with 105 CMR 201 dot 005, the following words shall have the following meanings. Licensed athletic trainer, AT, means any person who is licensed by the Board of Registration in allied health professions in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 112, Section 23A and 259 Code of Mass Regulations 4.00 as a professional athletic trainer and whose practice includes schools and extracurricular athletic activities. Extracurricular athletic activity means an organized, school-sponsored athletic activity generally occurring outside of school instructional hours under the direction of coach, athletic director or bandleader, including but not limited to alpine and Nordic skiing and snowboarding, baseball, basketball, cheerleading, cross-country track, cross-country track, fencing, field hockey, football, golf, gymnastics, horseback riding, ice hockey, lacrosse, marching band, rifle, rugby, soccer, skating, softball, squash, swimming and diving, tennis, track, indoor and outdoor, ultimate frisbee, volleyball, water polo and wrestling. All interscholastic athletics are deemed to be extracurricular athletic activities. Concussion means a complex disturbance in the brain function due to direct or indirect trauma to the head related to neurometabolic dysfunction rather than structural injury. Head injury means a direct blow to the head or indirect trauma to the head, including a concussion or traumatic brain injury. Scalper or facial laceration alone is not a head injury for purposes of 105 Code of Mass Reg 201 dot 000. Parent means the parent or guardian of a foster parent or a foster parent of a student. School-based equivalent means a form or format that a school district or school develops in lieu of Department of Public Health forms which at minimum include all the information required by the most current department form posted on the department's website. Second impact syndrome means a potentially lethal condition that can occur when a person sustains a head injury prior to the complete healing of a previous brain injury causing dysregulation of cerebral blood flow with subsequent vascular engorging. Trainer means a person who provides students who participate in extracurricular athletic activity with health and fitness instruction, including but not limited to the fundamental skills of performance, strength or conditioning, but who is not, who is not a licensed athletic trainer. Traumatic brain injury, TBI, means a complex pathiophysiological process affecting the brain induced by traumatic biomechanical forces. TBI may be caused either by a direct blow to the head, face, neck or elsewhere on the body with an impulsive force transmitted to the head. TBI includes but is not limited to a concussion. Volunteer means an adult who volunteers as a game official, coach, assistant coach, team parent, physician, nurse or in an authoritative role to assist students who are engaged in extracurricular athletic activity. In addition, in this document and any related documents, qualified medical provider refers to a duly licensed physician, a licensed athletic trainer or nurse practitioner in consultation with a licensed physician, a physician assistant under the supervision of a licensed physician or a licensed neuropsychologist in coordination with physician managing the student's recovery pursuant to 105 Code of Mass Regulations 201 dot 011. Qualified medical providers providing medical clearance for return to play shall verify that they have received department-approved training in post-traumatic head injury assessment and management or have received equivalent training as part of their licensure or continuing education. For further definitions, please refer to 105 CMR 201 dot 00.
Training. As specified in 105 CMR 201 007, Millis Public Schools Athletic Department shall require annual training in the prevention and recognition of a sports-related head injury and associated health risks, including second impact syndrome and will keep documentation of the training on file for the following people. Coaches, licensed athletic trainers, trainers, volunteers, school and team physicians applicable. School nurses, athletic directors, marching band directors, parents of students who participate in extracurricular and an extracurricular activity and students who participate in an extracurricular athletic activity. This training will be completed utilizing Department of Public Health, DPH, approved training materials or programs. Free represents participation in extracurricular athletic activities. Prior to students' participation in extracurricular athletic activities, students and parents must provide the following documentation to the Athletic Department. One, annual documentation of a student's physical examination, which is considered valid per MIAA Rule 1. It performed within 13 months of the start of the sport season. This documentation will be confirmed by the Athletic Department and kept in the student's health record in the school nurse's office. Two, prior to each sport season, a completed pre-participation head injury concussion reporting form or school-based equivalent pre-participation form. The Athletic Department will review this information upon receipt. Any information indicating a history of head injury will be further reviewed by the AT and/or school nurse. The Athletic Department will also provide a copy of any such information to the appropriate coaches. Three, certificate of completion for any DPH approval online course or sign acknowledgement that they have read and understand DPH-approved written materials or attended a school-sponsored training at which their attendance was reported. The certificate and/or acknowledgement are valid for one year. Four, educational materials on the dangers of opiate use and misuse from Bureau of Substance Abuse Services and educational material from the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services will also be distributed in written form to all students prior to commencement of the athletic season. If the student or parent fails to provide any of the above information, the student will not be permitted to participate in the activity, trials or practices until the above documents are submitted. If necessary, the Athletic Director or designee or the coach will come contact the parent to attempt to obtain the required documents even when the student has completed the training that the parents have not. If it is not possible to produce a certificate of completion from the online course, Millis Public Schools will accept a written or electronic confirmation that the parents or students have read and understand the DPH-approved written materials. Exclusion from play and reporting requirement. Any student who near participation in an extracurricular activity, athletic activity, sustains a head injury or suspected concussion, exhibits signs and symptoms of a concussion or loses consciousness even briefly shall be removed from participation immediately and may not return to participation that day. Evaluation and clearance by a qualified medical provider will be required in order for the student to return to participation. Parents will be notified promptly of the nature of the injury, imprisonment or by phone or whoever the injury is reported to, coach, AT, school nurse, et cetera, so that the parent can ensure that the student receives medical evaluation and treatment. This communication must occur no later than immediately following the activity in which a student has been removed from play or head injury, suspected concussion, signs or symptoms of a concussion or loss of consciousness. The parent must also provide with this information in writing by the notifying party, whether paper or electronic format, by the end of the next business day. Emergency Medical Services, ENS, will be contacted if the student experiences loss of consciousness, seizure, persistent vomiting, amnesia, significant alteration or deterioration in mental status and/or significant worsening of signs or symptoms. If the AT is on-site anywhere on the Millis Public Schools campus, the AT must notify, must be notified of the injury immediately so that the AT can assess and monitor the student until the parent arrives or if necessary other medical attention via ENS is provided.
If the AT is not on-site or the injury occurs at any away or off-site event, the coach must ensure that the parents are notified as above. The coach or their designee must supervise the student until the parent arrives or other medical attention is provided. The coach must also notify the AT about the injury as soon as possible and no later than 24 hours after the injury occurred. The AT and/or coach will communicate by the end of the next business day with the Athletic Director, AD, and the school nurse that the student has been removed from activity for a head injury, suspected concussion, signs or symptoms of a concussion or loss of consciousness. The coach will also complete the report of head injury during sports season form or school-based equivalent, report of head injury form, and provide a copy to the AT and school nurse in a timely manner. This form may also be completed by the ET. If a student sustains a head injury or concussion during the season but not while participating in an extracurricular athletic activity, the parent shall notify the school as soon as possible and complete the report of head injury form or a school-based equivalent and submit it to the AT, school nurse, AD and/or coach. Any pre-participation forms which indicate a history of head injury as well as all reports of head injury form shall be reviewed in a timely manner by the AT, student coaches and school nurse so as to identify students who are at greater risk of repeated head injury and to follow for provision of appropriate care and follow-up for new head injuries. The Millis Public Schools may use a student's history of head injury or concussion as a factor to determine whether to allow the student to participate in an extracurricular activity or whether to allow such participation under specific guidelines, conditions or modifications. Communication and sharing of information concerning athletics, history of head injury and concussion, recuperation, reentry plan and authorization to return to play in academic activities will be conducted on a need-to-know basis consistent with requirements of 105 Code of Mass Regulations 201 dot 000 and applicable federal and state, including but not limited to the Massachusetts Student Records Regulations, 603 Code of Mass Regulations 23 dot 00 and the Federal Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act Regulations, 34C Code of Federal Regulations Part 99.
Let me help you out Steve. Graduated reentry to academics and activity. Each student who is removed from participation and subsequently diagnosed with a concussion shall have a written graduated reentry plan for return to full academic and extracurricular athletic activities. The plan will involve the school nurse, AT, the student's guidance counselor and teachers, the student's parents, coaches, the student's primary care physician or other qualified medical provider in consultation with any other appropriate individuals as needed on a case-by-case basis. Return to athletic activity plan will be overseen by the AT. School nurse or designee will notify the academic teachers of the affected student-athlete and provide either written or email guidelines for concussion accommodation plans. The written plan shall include instructions for students, parents and school personnel addressing but not limited to physical and cognitive rest as appropriate, graduated return to extracurricular athletic activities and classroom studies as appropriate, including accommodations, all modifications as needed, estimated time, intervals for resumption of activities, frequency of assessments as appropriate by the school nurse until full return to classroom activities and extracurricular activities that authorized. A plan for communication and coordination between the among school personnel and between the school parent and student's primary care provider or the physician who made the diagnosis or who is managing the student's recovery. A student diagnosed with a concussion must be completely symptom-free at rest in order to begin graduated reentry to the extracurricular athletic activities. Student must be symptom-free at rest with cognitive activity and during exertion in order to complete the graduated reentry plan and be medically cleared to play. Medical clearance and authorization to return to play. Each student who is removed from participation for head injury, suspected concussion or loss of consciousness even briefly or exhibit signs or symptoms of a concussion shall not be permitted to return to play until they obtain a DPH post-sports-related head injury medical clearance and authorization form, head injury medical clearance form, or school-based equivalent prior to resuming the extracurricular athletic activity. This form must be completed by a qualified medical provider, may only be completed after the student has been completely symptom-free and has completed their graduated return to academics and activity protocols. Must be submitted to the AT or AD and will be shared between the AT, AD and school nurse. The ultimate return to play decision is a medical decision that may involve a multidisciplinary approach, including consultation with parents, the school nurse and teachers as appropriate. The AT will provide final notification of clearance for each student to the coaches, the AD and the school nurse. These return to activity policies also apply to students who have currently participated in an extracurricular athletic activity but sustains concussion or head injury outside of said activity. Roles and responsibilities. The superintendent shall maintain or cause to maintain complete and accurate records of district's compliance with the requirements of MGL 111, 222 and 105 CMR 201 point 000. The school, consistent with the applicable state and federal law, shall maintain the following records for three years or at a minimum until the student graduates. Verifications of completion of annual training and receiving materials, DPH pre-participation forms of school-based equivalents, DPH report of head injury forms of school-based equivalents, DPH medical clearance and authorization forms of school-based equivalents, graduated reentry plans for return to full academic and extracurricular athletic activities. The Athletic Director shall be responsible for the implementation of this policy and any accompanying procedures as relates to students in grades six through 12 who participate in extracurricular athletic activities. Coaches, ADs, ATs, trainers and volunteers are required as applicable to teach form, techniques and skills and promote protective equipment used to minimize sports-related head injuries to discourage and prohibit students from engaging in any unreasonably dangerous athletic technique which endangers the health and safety of students such as using a helmet or any other sports equipment as a weapon. Students who engage in, students who engage in unreasonably, it should be in, students who engage in unreasonably dangerous behavior while participating in extracurricular athletic activities will be subject to the code of conduct, including forfeiture for games and personal sanctions and possible disciplinary consequences. Review and revision of this policy shall occur as needed at a minimum of every two years. Participants in this review shall include but are not limited to the AD, AT and school nurse. The Millis Public Schools head injury/concussion policy for extracurricular athletic activities shall be made available on the Millis Public Schools website and shall be published in the Millis High School Handbook, available at http-hs.millisp.org/information/school-handbook and Millis Middle School Handbook, available at http.mills.pss.org/information/school-handbook. Information, necessary forms of materials relating to this policy will be available to parents and students on the Millis Public Schools website as well as through the Athletic Department. These forms will be translated to parents with limited English proficiency. The Millis Public Schools will make special arrangements for parents with limited English proficiency for the trainings. All coaches, trainers, ATs and others involved with the Millis Public School athletics are responsible for following this policy and procedures and protocols associated with this policy. Failure to do so will result in penalties included but not limited to personal sanctions. These policies and procedures shall be made available to the Department of Public Health and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education upon request. The Millis Public Schools will provide the Department of Public Health an affirmation biannually by September 30th of every odd number of years that has developed policies including with 105 CMR 201 point 00.
Mr. Chair, in the second to last paragraph, failure to do so, the last sentence, failure to do so will result in penalties included but not limited to personnel, not personal.
Actually, in the version we put in the packets, the printed version, it's personal. That was the one that got emailed out, had an error. So we cut that error.
It's personal.
Personal sanction.
What does that mean?
Because below it's also, I think in the, in the sentence below, twice it mentions personal sanctions. Oh, up above in the paragraph that had the other typo, it's personal sanctions.
Volunteers and...
It's in the paragraph with the "in" that we just corrected.
What is a personal, what's a personal sanction?
Personal sanction, the policy does not specify what that might be. So it is part of the law though.
And the law doesn't describe what a personal sanction is?
No.
Okay. And then lastly, Mr. Chair, I know that, I suspect that mostly this is coming right out of laws or model policies. A lot of, a lot of very specific kind of outline or when a student's to return to play. Should we or if the law suggests you decide or be clearly outlined who has the final decision when someone cannot play? Because right now, the bottom of page three, the Millis Public Schools may use a student's history of head injury or concussion as a factor to determine whether to allow the student to participate in extracurricular activity or whether to allow such participation under specific conditions or modifications. It doesn't say who will have, who makes that decision.
Later in the policy it does, I believe. On page four, near the bottom, it does say the athletic trainer will provide the final notification, but prior to that, let's see if I can find it. The schools do have the final say and it does specify.
I'm talking about getting them out. No, I know the schools, but who in the, someone has to have, someone has to have the final say. Someone within the school has to have the final say. Maybe a team's.
Jamie just got called out to the game.
Well, we have to do another reading.
Yeah.
So, but listen, I'm okay with this policy because I know it's coming out of Mass General Law, but they're very, very specific on the return to play, but they leave it open on putting someone off the sports. And so saying that the AT will send the form out or send the notice out is not saying, that's not the same as making the decision whether there, someone is not allowed to play.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is a, on page four towards the bottom, the ultimate return to play decision is a medical decision that may involve a multidisciplinary approach, including consultations with parents, the school nurse and teachers as appropriate. So that's as close as we get to who is making the final decision. We say a group of people. It doesn't specifically say after that, but the final decision is...
I'm fine with that. Who's, is that same group making the decision to put them out of sports?
That's kind of the same thing, they can't return to play. Yeah. That's how I read it. They're out until they're cleared to return to play.
Correct. The symptoms on the matter come out. Nobody gets the call that they're out.
So yeah, the occurrence of the...
No, someone has...
Well, no, this is...
Listen, I know what you're saying, but we're looking at something that's very specific on steps and that piece is big.
But this is, because this is pre-participation form, so I guess the question would be who in this frame, you would have an individual whose past history is being, being used to determine whether they can play or not, which says the Millis Public Schools may use a student's history to determine whether to allow the student to participate in any extracurricular activity.
Mr. Chair, I have.
It's in the paragraph of the, any pre-registration.
Mr. Chair, I inquire.
Yep.
Nancy, Andy Warwin over this?
Yes.
Andy was good with it?
Yes. I'll start and read it. I believe the process is in that paragraph on page four that the, there has to be medical clearance and the medical provider signs the authorization form which then, it says this form must be completed by the qualified medical provider. And then they come into schools with that form and there is the discussion among, it could be a multidisciplinary group that could include the parents.
Okay, and just so we're clear, there's one thing about being injured on the spot, right, which is clearly outlined. And then there's another one. My question rises from these pre-participation forms. This is not, someone is injured at a basketball game tonight. This is someone presents with a form and it's just a, maybe it doesn't have to say it, but someone could potentially, a parent or a student could have a problem with not being allowed to participate.
Not be able to play in the spring because you had a concussion or one concussion or two in winter or the fall.
Right, so this is not based, this is not specific to a, an injury where the policy clearly states they have to go out. It's a question of, it's the removal based on the pre-participation form. So if we're okay with basically just saying that the Millis Public Schools may use a student's history of head injury or concussion and that implied in that it's multiple people, that's fine, but I just think that a policy should, when we're being this specific about many things, should probably enumerate exactly who has that final say. Maybe it is, maybe we want to put the team in.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to check with our athletic trainer and see what the protocol is right now and bring that back to, and there's a chance she may be out for the basketball game.
We don't have to do it. We have another, we have to do the third reading or less.
Okay.
So we'll do the third reading at our next meeting, uh, 20. Next student representant.
Taylor White Shoe Drive is still running until May. My senior project is a book drive and it's running from now until the end of March. The Corson Band is having their cabaret concert this Saturday, the 11th and it starts at seven. And then February break is from the 20th to the 24th.
Thank you.
Clyde Brown is having a reading challenge that began on Monday. It will go through till the end of February. Their goal is to have all students in each classroom for 15 minutes a day and they're hoping to have some kind of a prize or reward at the end for the classes, of classes that be the most reading, maybe those who are taking, meet their goals. The middle school has collected about 300 items for the Super Bowl fundraiser last Friday and the high school also participated tonight. Here is a writer's showcase Wednesday, February 15th from 2:30 to 3:30. And you can come here, middle school authors read their works. March 2nd is Dr. Seuss's birthday and there's going to be a Fox and Sox challenge and a family night for the Squash Book Fair begins from 4/6 that same evening. And the high school, Ethan Lazar won the Tri Valley Meet for the shot put at Saturday's meet. And on March 2nd, there'll be a merit scholarship fundraiser, fashion show and has promuluted prizes at that. And the library is sponsoring Black History Month, they're having a poster contest and you're invited to come and vote your favorite poster. This is Cheryl's senior immersion classes are doing a letter exchange like a pen pal and Clyde Brown, they're grade students. And she also has two of her honor students that have created books, Spanish immersion students in Spanish and they're going to go read them to the Clyde Brown first grade immersion class. And that's it.
Mr. Chair, our athletic trainer is back and it might be efficient to have her answer the question tonight so she does not have to attend the next meeting. Mr. Kettlewood, if you can repeat the question if you don't mind.
Just so they catch you on the mic.
So do you have a copy of that? So on the bottom of page three, the last paragraph, it talks about the pre-participation forms and how a student can be removed. So the last sentence says, the Millis Public Schools may use a student's history of head injury or concussion as a factor to determine whether to allow the student to participate in an extracurricular... extracurricular activity or whether to allow such participation under specific conditions or modifications. My question is when you're out of the room, who makes that final decision? Is it, is it a team effort? There's, there's mentions of teams on return to play, but this is not post an injury, so it's not someone that you just treated at a basketball game. This is someone presenting with the form that you trigger and say, there's something here, we're not going to allow them to play. Is that you, is it the athletic director? Who makes that decision? Because the rest of the policy is fairly specific around decisions and timeframes. It's not specific right there.
Actually, that line was a recent addition, I believe, after the final, with the final revisions through the attorney, I believe. And so the superintendent and I, the athletic director discussed it when we reviewed this, and it is a team decision. It doesn't get as specific here. It's basically, I think, just allowing the school to address it if there's a concern with a history of multiple concussions, but there would be, you know, consultation with the student's physician, with the family, and potentially, you know, with the athletic trainer and the athletic director.
So why would it, is there any reason why we wouldn't explain who the team is or what potentially could be done? So we're doing it on the return.
Right.
So if this is an addition, so this is an addition based on what the attorney said?
Yes. Yes, it wasn't, yes, it wasn't written in.
So we can go back and say whether we should be or not, but I think we should try to be as specific as possible if we're specific on the return. It's the same thing, we should be specific on the way out.
Right, yeah, I think.
And I, I understand it's, it's kind of implied that it would be a team, but if we're, if we're writing a policy that becomes the rule, right, we should be as specific as possible.
Right, yeah, I think it was just saying, you know, giving the, the middle school some oversight to say, you know, this is a concern, we need to look into it further, but it's, yeah.
Would be the same, would effectively, in your opinion, be the same team that is returning someone, would be the same team putting it out, based on a pre-participation, not an injury that happens during the, what happens?
Yeah, I, in general, yeah, would be a similar group of people that, that would discuss it, yeah, I would say so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. So, Mr. Chairman, so Mr. Catalano would, what you're recommending is perhaps adding a sentence to the end of that describing the team that may make that decision?
That would be my recommendation.
That would be the clarification?
Yes.
And I'll, I don't think, I can't foresee any legal reason not to do that, but I can run it by our legal counsel.
So I'm assuming why our attorney put that in.
Okay. It, it does say may use. I think it's just giving us the option.
Right, but I, but does it also give us some responsibility to know things that we may or may not know, something after that?
I'm assuming if we're paying an attorney, that he viewed it very specifically and, you know, he didn't write it haphazardly.
No, I agree.
Absolutely.
So I'll check, does this obligate us to know and act if we know, or, or does it maybe hold us responsible if we know and clear somebody to play? Is that your concern?
Yeah. Why don't we do time and hour next meeting?
Do we have to?
Do you want to do that program, the program guys?
Study?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Mr. Malini?
So we have proposed changes to, okay, so we can start with that. We have a few proposed changes, a couple of, a few course proposals for new courses. And so I'll just jump right in. The first item proposed change is simply a name change for a category, and the proposal is to change the computer media courses to be designated on the computer science. Rationale being that our movement now is more towards the computer science aspects of those courses with coding and increasing different things that fall more in line with computer science rather than merely computer media. Also in the computer science realm, we have a few proposed new course offerings. All our new courses are dependent on staffing and enrollment. The nice thing about computer classes is we can often run multiple sections concurrently because of the personalized nature of, of the computer lab. The first new course proposed is an introduction to computer science, and this would be a half-year course, and most, most likely would be a freshman course. It would be similar to the art design and media course, which all our freshmen take opposite health. This would give incoming freshmen another option if they have more of a computer bent than an art bent. So the art design and media class uses the computer lab. The class is in the computer lab. They work a lot with presentation skills that kids are going to use for the next four years in high school and hopefully beyond. So those components, a lot of the presentation components would be similar, but rather than the focus being on graphic art, things like that, the introduction to computer science would have components that deal more with coding and things of that nature. Other new course proposals in the computer science area would be a video game design and programming course, which a number of our students have done as modules in existing computer classes, and it's kind of like what happened with animation a few years ago, the, the amount of material out there and what kids are able to do just kept getting bigger and bigger, so we, you know, created a digital animation class. It would be the same type of situation with gaming. A lot more kids are, are doing things in the different computer classes with gaming and game design. We have a number of students who upon graduation are looking for programs in game design and have done that over the last few years. We've had a few kids go to different colleges to, to take up computer gaming. We are also hoping to offer an AP computer science class. Last year, you may recall, one of our new classes was exploring computer science, so this will kind of be the next step. And again, the, the good thing is, is that's a class that we could run concurrently with other classes. And we have a number of students who have already expressed interest, and usually for, for any class, we usually try and have 10 students minimum. The nice thing about AP computer science class is if we have five kids, if we can schedule them all in the same period, they can be in there while another class is, is doing other things, kind of like what we do with the API. So that's something that, you know, we'd like to get off the ground, and we think we have the enrollment to do it. The other proposed classes outside the computer realm, contemporary crime fiction would be a semester course that would run opposite speech. Currently, that the class offered is Shakespeare Unplugged, and this would be a change, and this would essentially replace Shakespeare Unplugged. Kids still get Shakespeare in freshman year, in Brit Lit, and in World Lit senior year, but, you know, we think this, this class would get a lot of enrollment. And another course offering at the AP level would be an AP US government politics class. You may remember last year with the big junior class, the rising sophomore class, the junior class, had a number of students who were interested in, in AP US history, so we wound up being able to create two sections of that for that big class. Well, that junior class is now moving to seniors, and we, we had last year the AP human geography class that we've gotten off the ground, and so far has been pretty successful. And the AP government class, we've had a number of kids take it online. We think, again, depending on enrollment and staffing, we think we could probably run one section of US AP again next year instead of like two we have this year, and then, we could, that would give us space for another section where this, this might fit. And then in the, in the digital media, part of our program of studies, Mrs. Mannion has proposed a broadcast journalism and documentary filmmaking class, which, kind of like the, the gaming class, kids have done modules and units where they're doing broadcast journalism, documentaries. More and more of our students are entering documentaries into different film festivals, and our kids are doing really well. So again, this is something that we think takes it to another level. And again, with the television and digital media classes, oftentimes we can run those concurrently with other things, so it could be multi-level. But just seeing what the kids have done the last few years with documentaries, I think this would be a great progression in our, in our program and really tap into some of the sophisticated writing, reporting, storytelling, so we'd be excited to offer a class like that, and I think it would be well subscribed. So those were the proposed new courses and the one, the one change.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Malini, do any of these courses or any of the change to the handbook or the program studies, I should say, does that require any hiring of new staff, or are we going with the existing staff?
Right, these would all be, you know, the, the assumption is it's run under what our current staffing rules.
Okay.
Then the next question is around cities, eligibility, how we become a community?
Most of these would either run concurrently, like the computer and the visual media classes. The, the modern fix, crime fiction and the AP American government would replace sections that were already offered. So instead of Shakespeare unplugged, crime fiction would be in there, and instead of the extra section of AP US history, we'd potentially run a section of AP US government.
And how do you return? Is there, do you poll the students and see what their interest is?
Yeah, generally it, it happens, teachers might come up with an idea for kids, like in the example of American government, we had a lot of kids taking it online. And, and so, you know, a teacher noticed a lot of kids coming and asking for help, and so that teacher thought, well, maybe we can offer this course here. So it kind of comes, you know, from the ground up, and a teacher will say, that might be something we can propose, and they usually do, you know, informal polls with their classes. You know, we'll do, for, for example, for AP computer science, we did an announcement, anyone interested, you know, go see Mr. Jay Marino. He knew most of the kids who would be interested anyhow, but, you know, you can catch a few kids that you may not know about, doing things like that. So it's, it's informal, it's non-binding, and then once we do the scheduling, then we figure out what we can really offer, and, you know, what is a good idea, but maybe not ready for prime time.
Question, you mentioned, we have kids who may be taking it online, and now we're, you know, maybe bringing that in-house.
In-house, yeah.
Basically. Either in these or in other, are we then, like, are we cutting back on something else that we could be offering? You know, we're, we, we have the capability to offer courses online, part of that is, you can offer more electives because you've got something you're doing here, you can offer, so if we pull things in-house, are we limiting total opportunity because?
Destroying other sections.
Yeah, and taking something that may not be offered online, and so, you know, instead of having that subject online and this one in-house, we brought that in-house and now this one doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, there, there has to be kind of a critical mass of kids taking it. Most of the AP online courses are, you know, two and three kids. Over the years, we've probably had, and Mike and Riley can probably attest to it, probably AP Euro, AP Psych, and AP American Government probably the most subscribed. But for a given year, it's never more than two or three kids, so by offering it here, we'll have more kids than the two or three, so it's, it's, you know, creating a new section that other kids who wouldn't normally do it online will do it here. A second thing is, data shows that the kids do better on AP classes when they're taught here. Online AP scores are lower than our in-house AP scores. We're working on improving that, closing that gap, but it's, you know, college-level material, it's nice to have an instructor that you can go to kind of on demand when you're struggling and things, and sometimes you don't have that in some of the online APs. Like I said, American government and things like that, they'll consult with a teacher, they'll ask us Museum of Questions and things like that, but some of the online AP classes, we really don't have someone who, you know, if a kid's taking AP economics, well, we have teachers that know economics, but we don't have an economic teacher. So, and, and that's, and that's, you know, when we do have to, sometimes we do have to make a decision, well, we have, you know, eight kids who are interested in this AP class, but we have, you know, 38 kids interested in law, but we're going to run two sections of law rather than one, one law and one AP government. So those are the decisions we make when the real numbers come in.
Mr. Chair, I, I appreciate Mr. Malini's responsiveness and also proactiveness in developing new courses and for the teachers, because developing an AP course is no small feat. It's a lot of work and very intensive, and so, thank you, I appreciate it. We've expanded the number of AP offerings in-house to be over, I forget the number now, 10 or 12?
I think we have, probably eight. Probably, and then Mike and Riley have more.
They have more data.
Yeah, they have some data tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the proposed changes to the high school program of studies for the academic year 2017 into 18.
Correct. Proposed in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I have a couple of other things.
Okay. Let's see. What's that?
I'm not asking for, well, I guess I am asking for some things, but they cost us money. I just wanted to update the committee on something we're looking at for 17, 18. It's not any new courses or anything, but we're looking at kind of a lot. It's not any new courses or anything, but we're looking at kind of allowing, expanding opportunities for kids to pursue a passion. And we've kind of divided it into, you know, we have some kids who are humanities kids, they like English, they like social studies. And we have some kids who are science kids, who are into science and math and engineering. So one of the things we're looking at doing for next year is developing a couple of programs that kids can opt into, voluntary programs, where they can go beyond the normal requirements and kind of pursue interests in either STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art and math, or in the humanities or global studies. And what we're looking to do is develop a STEAM Scholars Program and a Global Studies Certificate Program. So if a student has a particular interest in science and engineering, they can take some courses beyond the minimum requirement of three laboratory sciences. The program would involve taking additional courses either here or online or outside of school. They would, this program would involve kids choosing to do experiences beyond school, like maybe some job shadowing or attending lectures or workshops outside of school, being involved in a project in the sciences on that side or in math, or on the humanities side, a global studies project, research project. And it's, we're kind of in our beginning stages, but it's something that we think would be good for our kids to pursue and then apply to be a STEAM scholar or apply to receive a Global Studies Certificate. There'd be kind of a faculty advisory board in each area. And then if the students took the classes, had the extracurricular activities involving those things, then senior, it would be noted on their transcript that they were a STEAM scholar or they received a Global Studies Certificate. So that's something we're also looking to do outside of just the program. So I wanted to fill you in on that. And then I do have a request. And this involves, you may recall back in September, we had exchange students from the Netherlands come here, live with those families. It was a great week. And the school in the Netherlands, the Jijak Pij High School in the Netherlands, has invited our students to go over to the Netherlands. And so we'd like to have a trip over to the Netherlands. We have eight students, seven Millis High School students who are, who would be willing and would be committed to going over. They'd live with the families of the students they hosted over in the Netherlands. I think in your packet, I think there's a tentative itinerary in there. And so they'd be going to the school on some days, they'd be going to various sites around Castrocombe, which is where the school is, and Castrocombe's about, about the same distance from Amsterdam that Millis is from Boston. And they'd be, so they'd do some touring in Castrocombe and then they'd do some, also be a day in Amsterdam. And there'd be time with a, just like when the Dutch kids came here, there'd be time with the Millis student, is just with the host family, kind of experiencing what Dutch life is like. And as I said, we have seven Millis students who would be, who are committed to going if approved. My family, we also hosted a couple of Dutch students when they were here, so my son would be going as well. I would be going as the chaperone. And we had, if approved, our schedule would be, we'd leave on the evening of April 13th, which is the Thursday before April vacation starts, so we'd miss that top day Friday. And we'd return the following Friday.
Mr. Chair, any questions? I make a motion to approve the Netherlands trip, April 13th through April 21st. Bob Alvar.
Full discussion?
Is it funny when the principals are at?
Well, the good thing is, they're with the family, so they don't see that much. They see me as...
Your dad who's the principal.
Regular.
We're going on a trip.
And the principal's... Well, they can learn Dutch things to say about me and my mom. But it's a great, it's a great group of kids. It was a great experience having the Dutch kids here. And it's something that I'd like to see, you know, continue when we come back. We'll see if there's interest to do it again next year. And I suspect there will be.
So all these kids are the kids that hosted the...
Right, we had 11 kids that hosted, 11 Millis kids that hosted. Some of them had already committed to the Peru trip and some of them tried to get it. So we've got the trip in February, so they could go to two trips. But I don't know how February in Amsterdam is probably like February in Millis.
Yeah. But what is the cost for the students?
The cost is the airfare, basically. And what we did was, we wound up, we tried, we looked at a company, but with, you know, under 10 students, there was no deal. It was actually going to a company would have been more expensive. So the flights were booked by individual families and it was about $800 for the flights. And then they were just pretty spendy, they won't need any money for lodging or anything like that. And they're very excited and they're going to have to, they're going to have to ride bikes to school because there's no buses, no cars there. And so it would be a cultural experience for our kids.
Got a gleam of a star over there with that big smile on it.
I know, yep, yep. They probably already know him. The kids have been communicating back and forth since September. So they're very excited to do this.
All those in favor?
All right. Thank you very much.
Enjoy the fun.
Thank you. And I'm just glad I don't have to follow Maka Riley.
All right. Don't really.
We'll go to Tyler.
Don't really. Love it.
Here we are.
New England right now this week. So we thought we would start strong, as Steve said, by kicking things off by having both of the most exciting things happening in New England all on one slide to get everybody's attention. No, but...
Start with the strong side.
Yes.
Before we finish though, for the best.
No, but in all seriousness, thank you very much for allowing us to come and present the Millis High School class of 2016 Profile of Testing and Placement. We'll try and go through this, get through this quickly. We know you guys have checked out the reports already, but we'll just kind of go over some of the highlights with you. To start, we wanted to give an update on how our seniors are doing right now and where they are at. So the seniors that applied early action or rolling have started to get some good news back. So here's sort of the compilation of the schools that we know about and, you know, we actually don't know about most of them because we don't find out about those until the end of the year. But so far, that's, those are all the ones that we know about. So we've got everything from Auburn, B.C., you know, down in North Carolina State, University of Tampa, just about all the Massachusetts state schools. We have acceptances to so far for the class of 2017. So it's an exciting time for them. Some of them are still in just that waiting period. So, and then, you know, we'll help them through the weighing their options and we're glad to be here to support them through that. And we're just excited to see where they all end up. So more on that next year. Some other things that we have going on in the school council department with all grades. We just finished our second round of freshman seminars. And in that, we kind of walk the freshmen through all they have to look forward to in high school, understanding a high school transcript, understanding their GPA, creating a four-year plan, talking about the different activities, sports, clubs, all that good stuff that they can get involved in throughout high school. We are smack dab in the middle of junior seminars, so we are going through, just starting to think about post-secondary planning for the juniors, explaining the college application process to all the juniors. Last week, we had our junior parent night again to just kind of walk everybody through that college process, college application process. And we had the help of reps from U.S. Amherst, Bryant University, Boston College, Mass Bay and Suffolk. They were on a panel on the stage and they also talked a bit about the process and were there to answer questions for our junior parents, which was awesome. On March 8th, we have our first ever Small School Big Future Conference. So it's something Mark and I have been working with Bob and Nancy on. And on March 8th, instead of having a regular school day, it is just a half-day anyways, but the kids won't have classes at all. And instead, we're bringing in, so far we have about 40 professionals from the community and beyond the Millis community to come in and talk about their careers and also just kind of give seminars on different topics that we think will help our students in their lives after high school and their careers and their community. So just kind of another initiative to promote 21st century learning, help expose our kids to some different material that'll help them get ready for life after high school. So we're excited for that. On March 16th, we'll have about 30 colleges come in to our cafeteria and meet with all of our juniors. Just, again, an opportunity for those juniors to really start thinking about what schools they might be interested in after high school. We are going to start scheduling in March. So we, Mark and I will sit down one-on-one with every freshman, sophomore and junior and make sure that they are all set for their schedule next year. And we will also meet with the eighth graders to explain to them how the scheduling process works at the high school. And then we will also have an eighth grade parent night on April 6th, again, to talk about the scheduling process, but also just to help parents prepare their eighth graders for all of the exciting and challenging things that they have to look forward to in high school. And then also, just as our seniors are getting their college, you know, acceptances and denials back, they're also getting those financial aid packages and every little bit help. So we try to, any scholarship opportunities that we hear about, we kind of compile them in a fancy bin in the counseling office. So we encourage our seniors, we're always updating that, so we encourage them to come down and check out the scholarship basket as often as possible. So, yeah, on to the class of 2016 and where they ended up. So 76% of the class of 2016 went to four-year colleges, and that's the 13th straight year that over 74% of the graduating class attended a four-year college. 91% planned to continue formal education in some form, and that is, that was the same as the class of 2015. And 88% or more have moved on to some sort of continuing education in each of the last 18 years. Based on the Barren's ranking of competitiveness of admission for 2017, 33% of all acceptances for the class of 2016 fell into one of the top three categories, so that's most competitive, highly competitive and very competitive. That was down slightly from the 38% for the class of 2015. 4% of all acceptances fell into that highest category, most competitive, which was the same as the class of 2015. The largest group of acceptances came in the competitive category with 55% of all acceptances, which was up slightly from the class of 2015. Again, we saw the majority of our students stayed in New England. So 76% of the class of 2016 chose a new, a school in a New England state, which was compared to 78% of the class of 2015. And they enrolled in 13 total different states throughout the country. So you have the seven New England states and then New York, Pennsylvania, Alabama, Florida, North Carolina, Virginia, and at least one brave soul made it all the way across to California. All right, so for the SATs, 90% of the class of 2016 took the SAT. The mean score was 1045, that's on a 1600 scale, so that's excluding the writing section. And that was a bit of a decrease from the class of 2015, so about a 16-point decrease from the class of 2015, sorry. The mean score on the 2400 scale was 1557, again, a bit of a decrease from the class of 2015. And we were slightly below the Massachusetts average and above the national average on that 1600 scale. And we're above both the Massachusetts average and the national average for the 2400 scale. And then just to note, this is the, kind of the final year that is using this same SAT test. The current seniors, they have taken the new redesigned SAT, so the test is slightly different. It's going to be back to just a 1600 scale. So that's some excitement to look forward to for next year. For now, this is still the old test. So just to break it down by section a little bit, the critical reading mean score was 530, which was the same as the class of 2015. That's tied for the sixth highest recorded since the SAT was performed in 1995. That's above, 13 points above the Massachusetts mean and 36 points above the national mean. And our math test was, the mean score was 515, which was down to the class of, from the class of 2015. It was 15 points below the Massachusetts mean and seven points above the national mean. And for the writing section, this again was the 11th and final class to take a redesigned SAT writing test. The mean score was 512, which was down 15 points from the class of 2015. 512 is six points above the Massachusetts mean and 30 points above the national mean. So, yeah, at this point, I'll hand it over to Mark. He'll tell you how we compare the Dart schools.
So over a year, we kind of take a look at the Dart schools, which are, it's a district comparison of other schools in the state of Massachusetts. So there's 10 other like schools using demographics and other information so that we can see where we fall in line. We use our average overall SAT scores. We use the highest scores in each category when we factor our scores, which I think when you look at the list of schools that are here, I think makes sense because amongst the schools that are on there, you'd find that we, we have the second highest participation rate of 90% on the SATs. Some of the schools that are on the list that we compare Dart-wise to sometimes have 30 or 40% less kids taking the SATs than we do. So I think it kind of levels things out a little bit as far as our participation goes and what our actual average scores are. We fall fifth highest between the 1600 and 2400 scales out of the 11 total schools that are on there, fifth highest in critical reading, the eighth highest math and the fourth highest in writing. And like I said, we have the second highest participation rate of all the schools that are on that list. You know, if you look at somebody like Douglas or Oxford, which kind of fall, you know, right behind us, or Rockport, which is right, right above, Rockport has 87% of test takers from their senior class, where like Douglas... from their senior class, where like Douglas has 68% and Oxford has 61%. So you can see there's a big difference. We have, we always have a lot of kids that are sitting for the test. Some of those kids go off to four-year schools, some of them go to two-year schools, some go military, some go trades. So it depends. So I, so I think we have a high participation, which is good because it allows the kids to have some options as they move towards senior year because some aren't sure exactly what they're going to do when they leave high school. This is just kind of a, this is a chart that you, you can see in your handout as well, but also just kind of, this shows where in the 1600 scale we sit amongst the DART schools, just so you can get some visual perspective on where that goes. Subject test participation rates, I feel like every year I've come in here, this has been something that, this has slowly started dropping further and further from the testing report. We had only 12% of all of our kids last year actually sitting for an SAT subject test. That's probably one of the lower, if not the lowest rates that we've had in a really long time. It was 16% the class before. Right now, I was just taking a look at the list the other day, there are, I think, less than 10 schools in the country that actually require subject tests now. Some places recommend them, some places will use them optionally for admission, but for the most part, they've tended to kind of fall by the wayside a little bit. It's one of the, one of the areas through SAT that they haven't actually, you know, they've completely redone their SAT reasoning test, like that's totally new now. They haven't looked at the subject tests in years. And I think part of that is because the participation numbers have been dropping and they're trying to figure out where they want to put their resources in as far as those tests go. And with more schools kind of dropping that requirement, I think you've seen our kids haven't taken the SAT subject test with the regularity they might have a while ago. So the examinations that our kids did take were in biology, chemistry, English Lit, math, to the two math tests that they offer, physics, Spanish, and US history.
Wasn't there, wasn't there a push at one point to bore all of these?
Yeah, it's changed, you know? It really has.
They've sort of been sitting for too long.
You know, you feel it one time because these are hour-long tests.
Because that old SAT test was a new SAT test.
It's, yeah. It's all changed. The old is the new and now the new is the old. And now that old one's dead. So we're all over the place. The final, we'll be putting the testing report together next year with all the new SATs and whatnot and trying to make some comparisons to what the data is in years past. Because generally, with the new SAT that's out there now, the colleges and what we're hearing from and what the SAT is when you look at comparisons, generally, the new SAT finds itself above 50 points higher in almost every category, each category, the math and the evidence-based reading and writing is what they call it now. There's about a 50% increase in score over the last exam. So the scores right now typically say if you had a 550 right now on your evidence-based reading and writing, that's probably ballpark about 500 on the critical reading of the previous SAT. So scores are, so scores are inflated a little bit on what they used to be. So we're trying to figure that all out as kids are starting to look at colleges and try to figure out what makes sense with their scores right now.
And why are they taking these tests now? If only 10% of, I mean, are these schools that our kids are going to?
Some, you know, I mean, the ones that are still requiring right now really kind of fit, it's Harvard, it's Yale, it's Stanford, it's, you know, so it's, it's an, it's an area of schools we're not, like, a high percentage of our kids are applying to, which I, you know, that's generally the case in most schools.
So they're just taking their half?
Yeah, so I mean, for a lot of them, and, no, the one other area that actually has a subject test requirement right now is the Coplex Scholarship in Massachusetts. If you score advanced in one category of your MCAS and at least proficient in the other two, you have an opportunity to apply for a Coplex Scholarship, which is potentially a tuition waiver to any of the state schools in Massachusetts. It's a tuition credit, they call it now. In order to do that, you have to have that advanced in the two professions. And then on top of that, either two AP scores of three or above, or two subject test scores in different areas that meet certain criteria. So it's been a, we've, a lot of the guidance counselors in the area have been talking to the state kind of regularly, saying it doesn't make a lot of sense to require kids to sit for subject tests when, for the most part, they're not taking them for colleges anymore. We kind of feel like there might be some more relevant tools out there to help, I guess it's a different discussion, but we feel like there might be some more relevant tools out there to help in determining those kids getting those tuition credits at the state schools because it's an extra, I mean, granted, it might save you a lot of money on the other side, but to sit for the subject tests that they really don't have to take anyway seems like an extra expense that isn't necessary when kids are sitting for SATs with a new option in readings, a writing section now, but I think is a little more valid than the old writing section of the SAT where you could kind of just, you could have a prompt and basically just write it. You could have a prompt about, I don't know, oil wings in Texas, and you could write an essay that talked about the President of the United States and how much you love football and the Patriots. And as long as it was a cohesive, well-written paper, you'd actually score well on it. Now you actually have to create an argument or support the argument and define the argument that's presented before you. So it's a lot more factually based. So there's other ways that I think kids have an opportunity to do that now. I think the colleges have found that subject tests are just not as, as important to them as they used to be. I mean, you have, there's over 900 colleges in the country right now that have gone test optional as well. I mean, that's, that's a huge number. And I feel like every day, like I think people say the Fair Test, which is the website that kind of tracks all the test optional schools, every day there's another email coming out saying another school's gone test optional. That's been a growing trend too. The tests aren't going away, but there's a trend towards a lot more optional nature of sending in scores and the subject tests have kind of fallen by the wayside as part of that.
Is it kind of fair to say that the AP exams have somewhat taken the place of the subject area tests?
You know, in some ways, but, but you're not required to submit those when you send in your applications. Like, most schools aren't looking for those in the, as far as the evaluative process of admissions. Some schools in the last few years that have moved test, that have moved test optional will allow you to send your AP scores, like they've said, we're going to go test optional, but we still want to get a gauge of kind of where you're at. So instead of, instead of sending SAT scores, you might be able to send a graded paper that you've done in class that we can take a look at, maybe a couple of AP scores that we can take a look at. You could send a subject test if you want to. You can send an ACT score. Some schools have moved towards that, saying you can take the ACTs because there's a science section on there, and they'll take a look at the science section in lieu of subject tests. So there's been, there's like different methods to get at it now, and I think that's part of the reason why this has kind of fallen off a little. It's been, you're right, Mark, it changes all the time. I know, I know exactly what you're saying.
It was like they all had to take more than two of them.
You kind of felt like there was, yeah, there was more of a push for it, you know? If you have kids that were doing it.
And it wasn't that long ago.
No.
Now they're completely, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're dying on the vine, it seems like, you know? And I don't know if they'll make a comeback, but right now, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't seem that way. Once it's been dropped, generally, you don't, you don't see it get pushed back again. So we'll see where it goes. So there's our subject tests. So we'll go from subject tests and SATs on to the ACT. We've talked about this before, all four-year colleges and universities accept the ACT. Now, they tweaked their exam a little bit, they tweaked the writing prompt on their exam in the past year, and they've tweaked how they report their scores out. When the college board put the new SAT out, they have a lot of subcategories now so that you can see where your successes are, what areas of math and English and writing and grammar, like where you're good at. The ACT's done something similar now where they've broken their exam down a little bit and put more subset categories in. They've changed their writing section a little bit as well. For our kids, 30% of the class last year took the test. We're encouraging more kids to take it. We've been really pushing to take both exams to see which one you score better on to send out for your college admissions. You know, unfortunately, I, we've had a little bit like, we've stayed pretty steady around like that 30 to 40% range. We'd love to see that rise up. We keep pushing that to the kids as much as possible. Forty-four percent in 2011 was the highest number that we had. I would say that we've had kids this year, last year, that have just sent ACTs. You know, not a huge number, but we've had some kids that have just sent ACTs to schools. Majority of your kids are still sending SATs. Some kids have sent both SATs and ACTs because they score a little bit higher in some categories than on the other, and we think it's going to help their application look good when the colleges go and what they call superscore their tests. For last year, our composite was down fractionally. It was 24.6, it was 24.3 from 24.6 the year before. So it was pretty close. And I'm still the second highest composite score we've ever had. And granted, it's, it's 30% of kids and usually some of those, some of the more high-achiever kids that are taking the test. We had slight decreases in all four subject areas that you can see up there. They were fractional. They weren't great. I think the biggest one was 1.3 points in the science section. Everything else was about like, you know, a tenth of a point, so it wasn't too much in each one of those categories. We were just behind the state average, which was 24.8, or above the national average. Massachusetts for like the, I don't know, it's the sixth, seventh, or eighth in a row, their kids, we ranked first nationally on the ACT. We also, as a state, have the lowest participation rate in the country on the ACT. So I think, again, in Massachusetts, for the most part, you're seeing like your more high-achieving kids are the ones that are sitting for the exam. So I think that's why our, our scores are pretty high. And we're usually ranking with Connecticut near the top of the scale on the ACTs. We're still going to keep pushing it though. So we'll move on to our AP scores, because I know we were just talking about APs a little while ago. We gave 18 different exams last year, which was a challenge, but we made it happen. We gave 11 the year before. Some of those come from those online classes that you, you know, that you guys are talking about. I think last year, for some of the online classes, kids took economics, psychology, US government politics, world history, statistics, physics. So those are some of the different exams that kids took that, you know, there's a lot. It's 18 different exams, that's just a sampling of them. Fifty-eight percent of our senior class participated by taking at least one AP class over their time at Millis High. That's about the same as the previous class, and they were 60%. Five of the eight exams that were physically taught here at Millis High School had at least 73% of the kids scoring three or better. And three of those exams saw at least 80% of kids score three or better. Three is considered the passing score on the AP exams. The highest percentage of students at three or better was in English language, which is a junior class, that is 88%. So almost 90% of the kids on that exam scored three or better, which is pretty impressive. Impressively, for the second year in a row, we were actually named to the AP District Honorable. I think what's more impressive about that is, I mean, it's 433 schools in the country. But I think the really cool thing is that Massachusetts is one of 25 schools this year that was such recognized. And for us to be amongst those 25 schools, I think, is very impressive. That, that basically means we're, we're increasing access to AP coursework while also watching our scores have an increase too. And I'll tell you, just having looked at the data from this year and seeing what we have for, for the number of students taking APs and the number of exams we're offering, this will by far and away blow away any participation numbers that we've had, I think, ever at Millis High School. I think, looking at last year, we've got 149 exams taken by 93 students. This year we'll have 144, well, the year before we had 147 taken by 85 students. Next year, we're going to have, I think, in the ballpark of 170-plus exams taken by over 100 students. So I'll show you the participation graph on the next slide, but it just gives you an idea of where it is. You know, some of that is a big junior class, and we opened up another section of AP Biology and another section of AP US History this year. And some of it's been our, kids taking extra online APs, things like that. But for last year's class, 71% of all the exams that were taken earned a three or higher. It was 80% the year before. Thirty-eight percent of four or better was 44% the year before, and 13% scored a five, which was the highest possible score. You can see our participation rates, and you can see since 2013, that number has steadily increased both in exams and number of students taking the exams. And like I said, as we get to next year, you're going to see another bump in that too. You're going to see that number of, number of exams up into the 170s and the number of kids up over 100, which is, well, you consider when I'm, when I'm looking at, you know, when you talk about like access to classes, and we've tried to make them accessible to kids, and, and, you know, some kids, it's tough for some kids, they've struggled with them. Some kids have stuck with, we've lost a couple of kids along the way because they were too challenging, but it gives, given them an opportunity to show that and see if they can handle the work. And I think that's really cool. And we have, you know, if we have 103 kids taking it next year, that's a quarter of the high school, excuse me, this year, that's a quarter of our high schools sitting for an AP exam at the end of the year. That's a lot of kids. You know, and the fact that we're able to offer that opportunity, I think, is, is pretty cool.
Mark, how many, how many differences do we see between scores on the ones that are taught here versus the online?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think if you, on the whole, I think that, you know, each one of those tests that we, that were taken online, for the most part, you're looking at maybe two or three kids taking each exam, with the exception usually being like an AP Psychology, like that usually has a few more kids in it. You know, for the most part, when you see those, you know, I would say like our classroom percentages for the number of students is far exceeding what you're seeing online. You know, it's a variety of different things. You know, sometimes you have, you don't have that face-to-face that you have with the professor like you do in the classroom, so that, you know, that kid, that back-and-forth, the earnest discussion about the topics, some of the group work that you can do in person, you know, the, the, the extra push that you have from the teacher, you know, to be able to go after school and continue those conversations, like I see the kids doing all the time, to use their classmates. I mean, they have an online platform to do that in, but it's just, it's not quite the same. I think kids that, we've had a lot of kids that have done it, I think, to experiment with an AP class online because they liked the topic. And sometimes, I think, some of those kids have found out that, wow, AP's a lot more than I thought it was. And, and, and those kids, I think, have struggled a little bit with it. The kids that are really, really pushing themselves and saying like, you know, I'm going to take the online AP class, but I'm doing all the readings, getting involved in discussion boards online, I'm, I'm doing stuff outside of school and I'm really pushing on it, have been a little bit more successful in it. But you've really got to be dedicated and driven to do it. And I think any of the kids that take AP classes online would say that. Like, you can't rely on thinking like this is just going to be easy, like it's actually going to be a lot harder than it would be if you're going to be sitting in a regular classroom. And I think if you look at, if you look on one of the pages, the scores from the last few years for our online classes, they're not as strong, you know, they're not as strong. I still think it gives kids, even though their scores might not be as strong, I think they get something out of the classes. You know, like maybe their AP scores don't carry them as, as far, but I still think they're learning things and pulling topics out that they, you know, gives them opportunity to learn some different things that they might not have in our catalog here. But I think the scores haven't been as high. And I think, you know, that, that is, it is challenging, tough classes.
For sure.
So for our mean grades, so overall, so for five of the eight exams taken at, at, at the high school, mean grades were three or above in five of the eight exams. And they were higher than state and national means in four of the eight exams up there that were taken here at Millis High School. And those are up on a, I don't know, I hope for each class were different. Just giving it anywhere over. AP Scholars, so 16 of the 53, so 17% of the class that took AP exam were named AP Scholars. Overall, there were about 18% of all students, so one extra kid, that kid was a junior, was named an AP Scholar. We had two kids that earned AP Scholar Distinction status, seven kids that earned AP Scholar of Honor, and seven kids that earned AP Scholar Award status. So that's been pretty consistent over the course of time as well, too. When I compare the AP scores to DART schools, you can see of the 11 schools, we have the fourth highest percentage of exams scoring three or above at 71%. Only three other schools that were up there, Georgetown, impressively had 100% of their school kids scoring three or above. Manchester Essex had 87, and Tanspa 72. So we were in the top four amongst those 11 schools, which again, which I thought was, was pretty impressive, I think, when I looked at it. Because I was trying to, I think, as I looked at it.
Georgetown, it was, right?
Well, that's what I was thinking, as I said, as I looked, I said, geez, they must have had like two kids take tests, right? But they actually had, it's 65 exams taken, so not, not, you know, anywhere near, I say 42 kids for 65 exams versus us, which was 93 kids for 149 exams. So obviously, we had a lot more tests taken here. It's 65 exams, that a lot of 100 or 100 kids scored three or higher is pretty good. But I, I don't know what their selection process and anything like that, but I think we offer access and opportunity to a lot of different kids. So our exam scores are going to be, you know, the fact that we do as well as we do, I think, is a testament to the teachers that are pushing the kids to achieve like they are in the classes and to the kids that they're putting to work. I always do a slide on Spanish immersion just to kind of see where those kids were at the end of last year. We had 14 kids in last year's class. Their GPA was not too far off from the overall GPA of the class, 3.304 to 3.125. 79% of those students indicated a four-year college versus 76% of the overall class. The entire Spanish immersion class took the SATs. They outscored the, the whole class in the reading section, were a little, just one point behind in math, and then were one point behind in writing. Their overall mean was 1578, which was higher than the overall mean of the class, and I think that's because of the critical reading scores you guys can see in there. And all 13 students that were in, there were 14 immersion students, one student did dual enrollment, so they didn't actually take the AP exam. The 13 kids that did take the exam all scored three or higher on the AP exam. There were two fives, six fours, and five threes.
Are there any kids that were in immersion that took the Spanish AP exam?
Yeah, plenty, yeah, absolutely. I think, in fact, last year we had 14 immersion kids. I want to say we had, I had 11, I'm looking at the thing, I think we had like 38 kids sit for the AP Spanish exam, which is, which is still a lot of kids. I want to say we had, I had eleven, I'm looking at the thing, I think we had like thirty-eight kids sit for the AP Spanish exam, which is, which is still a lot of kids. So yeah, we always have a pretty high participation. This year it's going to be, there'll be around thirty kids taking the exam, and I want to say there's fourteen or sixteen immersion kids, so more than half the class, for sure. See, it can be a little intimidating for some of those kids walking in with all the AP kids, but they all feel like they have their own strengths. So they all, they tell me which one, they're better than the immersion kids in this, the immersion kids in that, so it's a little competitive too. But it is a little intimidating watching, and they're walking in there with kids who've had Spanish since first grade. But we have a lot of kids that do it, which is good. So, so that kind of wraps up the, the report part of it. Just kind of taking like a global look at things, not just at the test report, but also to kind of talk about our office just a little bit as well. Our, our numbers of kids moving on to higher education continue to be high, you know, we're still hovering at ninety percent every year. We're definitely seeing an increase in the number of kids percentage-wise that are going off to two-year college, and I think we're going to see that again this year. Some of that, I think, is, is financial. Some of that, I also think, you know, the programs that they're offering at some of the community colleges and two-year colleges in the area right now. You can, you know, right now, we just ran our parente the other night, and the representative from Mass Bay was explaining that right now to do a full year at Mass Bay is about six thousand dollars. For a full year of credits at Mass Bay is about six thousand dollars, as opposed to say UMass Sandwich, which is in the ballpark of like twenty-nine thousand dollars. And they come up with a few different programs now, like they have a mass transfer program, and they have a new program called Commonwealth Commitment that just came out. Those two programs offer incentive for you to go in, do your two years at Mass Bay, get your associate's degree for twelve thousand dollars. And then take all those credits and transfer out to a state university in Massachusetts afterwards with bottom line acceptance as long as you get certain grades. You can get a tuition credit afterwards. That Commonwealth Commitment program now offers you a chance to lock in tuition rates at the state universities the year that you start the program at Mass Bay. You get like a ten percent, you get like ten percent back on your total bill as long as you maintain certain grades. You get a tuition waiver when you go in if you maintain certain grades, and they have a list of programs you can get involved in. So I think for some of our kids, it's become an attractive option, and I, I don't, I don't, we were talking about it today, like I don't blame them. You know, the, the bigger difference is you're commuting, you know, so you don't have that on-campus experience that you get freshman year. But from a financial perspective, you know, you're saving thousands of dollars. So I think this year we're probably going to see a good crop of kids doing it, you know. And some kids, there's a, there's a joint program between Mass Bay and Framingham State, we actually will come up with a Framingham State department. We have a couple of kids this year that are, they're exploring that option too. We have a kid that'll be going to the Mass Bay campus in Ashland to do the automotive training program. You know, which is, they, those kids, like a lot of times while they're in the program, they get paid while they're in there, and usually a lot of them come out with no debt because they're working for, they have like a hundred percent placement rate with those kids coming out of the program afterwards. They're doing internships and working jobs for auto companies while they're in, and they're coming out like not having much money because it's six thousand dollars a year to go to school. So, so we're definitely seeing a little bit of a shift in that, and that could change, but these last couple of years, we've definitely seen that. Competitive acceptances, I think, have remained pretty steady with us over the course of the last two years. We kind of took a look at our class from last year, we did some senior surveys at the end of the year to kind of see where the kids were at. Eighty percent of the kids said they were admitted to one of their top three choice schools, which is, which we think is really good. It was eighty-seven percent the year before, so not too far off. Sixty-three percent said financial aid package was a factor. That was off, that was up a little bit from the year before. And, and the thing that, that we liked seeing last year was the kids' overall satisfaction with their post-high school plan was, was like a four point three out of five. We'd love to see that be five out of five, and that's our goal and what we're working towards, but we thought that that was pretty good to see from last year's class. Nearly three-quarter of our AP exams scored a three or higher, which was the fourth highest percentage of all the Dart schools. I think that's really positive considering the number of kids that we have taking AP exams. Current seniors took the new PSAT, we'll have new data for our report next year, so that should make things interesting when we sit down and do this next year, we're doing some more explaining. For us, I guess, an opportunity to kind of try to toot our own horns a little bit. The class of two thousand and sixteen survey data showed that four and a half out of five, when we surveyed them, is the satisfaction overall with school contact services. Again, we'd love for that to be a five, but, but we're happy that it's on a, it's on a positive, it's on a positive trend. So we thank you guys, we thank the support we get from the community, from you guys as a school committee, from Nancy, from Bob. I'd be remiss if I didn't say we owe a lot to Erica Harkey in our office for keeping us together in one piece. And they'd make fun of me if we made me lunches most of the, half the week. But she's been great too, and we wouldn't do half of what we would do without her. So the teachers here are a great support to us, they're really good at letting us come to the classrooms and talk to kids. They're giving up a half a day of instruction for us to run this conference this year too, which we think will be great and help give the kids some, some skills that they'll need when they get out of high school. So thank you guys for letting us come in, and if you have any other questions, we're happy to take them.
Thank you.
No, no questions, they incorporated, they incorporated all of the comments from, they put Dart in there. I mean, this is, this is one of my top five presentation, it's very good. It's good to see the positive work that you're doing in helping kids succeed, not just necessarily going to school, but career to work. I mean, I think that's, school to work, that's, that's, that's an option for people, school's not for everyone. So looking at each kid as an individual and saying, what do we, what do they need to do to succeed where they need, I think that's really important, like can I do for that? I'm wondering if the last eighteen months of the presidential campaign, where one of the candidates was talking about the crushing debt of school, you know, the school debt, school debt, school debt. I'm wondering if that's resonating at some parents and some of the kids themselves, and then looking at, maybe, maybe they could get into that four-year school, but maybe that two-year program is a more financially secure and stable option opposed to... So it may not just be about grades or ability, it could, could start to be more financial than that's the only school that they could get into or that they felt comfortable in, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I think there's a reason why some of the community colleges in the last few years have started talking about potentially maybe putting some terms up. It's, it's, it's a kind of a constant conversation, it hasn't really happened yet, but it's out there.
Well, isn't it also they've made it so attractive that you can actually go? But I mean, you can go for two years, then go get a, a college degree with two years of paying for college. I mean, some people can't pass that up. I mean, Mass Bay, for instance, is very good at forensics. I mean, we see in, in the court, people from Mass Bay all the time, they're, they're nationwide known. I mean, they're, you know, and I mean, if you have a niche like that, people are going to be attracted to it. I mean, why, why would you go spend money you don't have to spend? I mean, and from my understanding, it's, it's a great bang for your buck.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And that's a big, that's a big topic of conversation right now, is what's my investment, what's my return? You know, I think all, all of the admissions reps talk about that a lot right now. And I think there's a lot of like, like you said, like, how much do I have, you know, how much am I going to spend, how much am I going to come up with debt to get the job that I want in the market the way that it is right now?
Well, having three Darties in high school and one on deck, if one of them goes that route, I won't cry.
So last question for me, is it seventy-six percent indicating that they want to, is there any way to compare that to other districts? Like, is that something that you can compare to Dart districts, or is that something that you just track on your own in school, other schools?
Yeah, yeah, we can do a comparison.
But does that seem, you, you've talked to other guidance counselors at other schools, does that seem right in the ballpark, or is it higher, is it lower?
No, I think it's right in the ballpark. You know, I think, you know, it depends on, I think if we're looking at the Dart schools, I, I, my guess is we're probably right in the ballpark, if not, higher than probably more than half. You know, if I'm looking at the chart from, from what I see that's on there, that would be my guess anyway.
I think you talked about three and four schools that only fifty or sixty percent of their kids are even taking the SATs. So there's, yeah, a bunch of them that are higher than.
I guess, well, some schools aren't accepting the SATs, or they're not forcing you to take the SATs or anything, but most schools are still looking for that, so if only fifty percent of the students, I can't imagine.
Yeah, I'd say most, if, if kids are thinking about a four-year college, they take the SATs. Even if they're going to apply to, they end up applying to schools that don't require them, they take them so that in case they do do well, they can send them.
We're going to have to commit, that serves as something that I've been figuring out, that's what I do.
One, I think this small school for a future company is a great idea, it's, yeah, congratulations for pulling us together. Do you guys, you said you had like forty people coming, is it a wide range of career spectrums and what is it?
Yeah, it is, we, yeah, we, it really is a wide range. And part of the, part of the process was surveying the kids to find out what topics would be helpful for them to learn about. And also, what are the careers that they're thinking about, and who do they want to talk to? So yeah, we have everything, again, like lawyers, healthcare stuff, mental health, jobs, automotive, electrical. I, yeah, I feel like just about. Homeland security. Yeah, so, yeah, pretty much everything we could think of, we tried to get. We are, I mean, if you know anybody who you think would want to come, definitely.
I guess that's that.
Yeah.
I can still teach the kids how to evade the police, right?
Yes, Sean's coming.
All right, good.
That's his topic. Exactly, so, yeah.
We'll have a separate room for you.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we are still, you know, pulling people in, so if you guys know anybody. But we do have, I, I think it's about forty different careers.
Denise Gibbons?
No, not me.
But I do know someone that I got to send their way.
You know, people, like, send them our way, we're not looking for some, happy to have some more people.
That's a job that's always.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you.
So, you have a good, a good knack on what kind of. So basically enrollment, overall, we're up by one student, but two choice students. And there's been a fair, a little bit of movement, we are down one student of nineteen out of district placements, you know. So we are now at eighty-one choice students, which is, looking back, you can see the October one reports going back to two thousand and ten, and we were at sixty-six. So we continue to be, and I know we have some kids on waiting lists that we just don't have room for in the high school. So that is a testament to the good work that's being done everywhere. The warrants, spring warrants, we, we take a look at and submit to the finance committee by twenty-second. We have a bus lease warrant for sixty-seven thousand, thirty-eight dollars, and actually thirty-three cents. This is the final year for leasing of six buses to the transportation of students. It is split, for several years, we have been putting forth a warrant at seventy-nine thousand, which included enough to buy out two buses as we typically do at the end of the year. So this year, we're working with the town administrator and the finance director to establish a stabilization fund for that purpose. And fund it separately because the town accountant had said that she had checked and it wasn't the most appropriate way to do it, the way we were doing it in the past. So this is the recommendation, and the chair and I are working with them to get the language ready for and passed through town council for the spring warrant. We do not have an exact amount yet, the bus company will come out and evaluate the two buses that we wish to purchase. But we have an estimate, it will be around forty thousand dollars per bus. So if that, if we fund it with forty thousand dollars this year and forty thousand next year, that should be enough to purchase the two, two buses. We typically trade in one, we have one very old bus, and as you heard from our conversation with athletics. And because these are older buses, they often need repairs or in the shop. So it'd be, it'd be great to have four available. We own three currently, and Mary Jane Driscoll, our transportation director, will come back to the committee with the final proposal and the, and the evaluation from the bus leasing company as to what that cost will be, the details.
Mr. Chair, on the bus lease, why are we using sixty-seven thousand thirty-eight?
That's the actual, so that is the actual payment that we have to make.
Going into a new contract next year, or is this the last year?
This is the last year.
So this is an exact amount?
Yeah, so this is the final payment in the current lease. What happened was, I'll just walk, I'll just walk through a little, because it's in my hand, I serve. The, the lease that we're currently in identified a, a balloon payment at the end that was an actual balloon payment. As opposed to prior leases where we had a one-dollar buyout at the end. So the, in the prior lease, the five years had an inflated annual payment that we had to make, which basically incorporated one-fifth of, of the buyout. Under this lease, in what the finance director's interpretation and guidance of, of what we should be funding and not through, through warrants, is that we shouldn't be allocating money that we will pay at a future date. That every warrant should be closed at, at the end of the year. Up until this year, that process had been allowed and moved through. They prefer not to do it any longer. So what we're talking about is creating some type of stabilization or revolving fund for this future payment. If we so chose to buy one or two at the end of each year, we always have. When, so we're waiting, we're waiting for language to come back from the town administrator and finance director as to how it would be established. Simultaneously, when we look at the new lease going forward, we will be looking at ensuring that the payments all correspond and line up so that what we have to pay is, is the one year that we actually pay the full amount. But, so that's what this lease stabilization fund is. And so when I was at the finance committee a couple of weeks ago, their request, because, so in essence, what happened is two of, the two articles, two warrants that were passed at town meetings the last two years. The excess of about ten to twelve thousand dollars per year was turned into free cash last November. So it's sitting as free cash right now. What the finance committee has asked is that we go through the process, and thankfully, the bus company is willing to do kind of an estimate on what, what the purchase price would be. And what kind of trading we might get so that we can go to town, or go to town meeting and go to the warrant this spring with an actual value to say, for example, if it's going to cost us eighty thousand dollars to buy two of them, we pick a number and maybe... So we split the difference, forty this year, forty next year, but to have a concrete number that says, this is the best estimate of what we're going to get, what we need to purchase the bus next, next year. So we're, that's why we have to break it out this year.
So if, if in the contract, the one that we signed, if it, if it said, they're five-year, right? Five years, and their, the payments are X amount of dollars per year, and then a one-dollar buyout, that would have been fine. Except in this one, it said that we owed money, a dollar amount at the end.
So, yes, that's the biggest hurdle. There is some question as to whether or not the lease can incorporate any component of a future possible payment or purchase.
For a dollar?
Yeah, which, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that interpretation at a later time, because that is counterintuitive, that in municipal government, you can't... because that is counterintuitive, that in municipal government, you can't have a one-dollar buyout at the end of the lease because virtually every lease has had that kind of scenario, so. But, yes, in the immediate term, the fact that, that we were allowing these articles and these warrants to have money that we weren't gonna spend until a future year, it, it being turned back, or was turned back. So, before we sign the next lease, we'll have it written in a way that is most advantageous to what we need to do.
Another of the so-called must-fund warrants is in, the information is in your purple folder, and that is the new, um, the next year of the computer lease, um, K test here, that's also included the replacement schedule, a description of what we would be doing with her next year of the lease for computers, which would be to replace the middle school computer lab. Uh, she, those computers are five years old. Um, you've been hearing this evening about the additional computer programming we're offering at the high school, but that starts in the middle school with a lot of, um, computer programming and high-end robotics and things that are happening in the middle school. Thus, we need to replace those, um, desktops in, for the middle school lab. It will also include some replacement of staff laptops that are five to seven years old. And for both of those, the desktops and the laptops, we always repurpose and we'll be using those, um, whether, and that, you know, to be determined whether they get redeployed at the elementary school or, you know, what, um, and we generally, um, solicit a lot of teacher input as to who needs what and, um, you know, who would like those older machines. So that, um, actually, the exact amount, on my cover sheet, it says seventy thousand, but the exact amount of that lease is sixty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. And that is three tiers, as you see in the, in the graph.
But it's actually, so we're clear, this is actually, this sixty-nine thousand is actually three separate leases.
Three, yes.
So, I guess what I, what I would, and I just got this, we haven't had to read it, what I, what I'd like to make sure we are very clear on and concise in terms of presentation is what is the year-one component of those? What are we getting and why are we getting those?
Right, that is what is in the write-up, the middle school lab and some replacement laptops for staff.
So, so I guess in this major, in this chart, it talks about mobile devices for students?
No, that's, um, no. So for next year, FY eighteen, this, uh, what we're seeking is year-one of a new lease, a three-year lease.
Okay, that's.
That is the middle school lab and the laptops. The, um, one below that, that, and it's easier, we, we should've done color copies for you because it's color-coded. Below that is, we're in, um, next year, we will be in the second year of the middle row lease, and we will be in the final year of the three-year lease that replaced the Clyde Brown lab.
Okay, alright, I was just reading a lot of column.
Yeah, sorry. And it is easier to read and we'll make sure, and the budget looks in for finance committee, it's color-coded. Um, but her, her write-up does specifically discuss the rationale.
Yeah, I saw that piece and that sort of, I was reading a lot of column, okay.
And then the Medicaid, um, warrant, which, for five thousand dollars, we, um, do all the billing, et cetera, um, through a consultant to net the town over forty-five thousand dollars per year. Um, and then the potential warrants, based on the discussions over the past couple of months with the administrative team and are very productive in meeting with the, uh, school committee last meeting. Uh, these are the capital items that are the priorities for, um, warrants to see if we, if there, if there is money, if we can get some assistance in funding these larger projects, um, such as, the first one, you've heard over the years of the needs of the auditorium, you know that there are, um, many seats that are broken, the lights, uh, for the stage that are used by Milis Theater Group and all the other groups, um, are very old and the audio system needs upgrading. Um, the computer board that runs the audio and the lights is part of that. So, um, John Engler has been working on a three-year proposal to do, um, to basically re-revitalize and re-restore the auditorium so that it's a working auditorium that's very viable for all community groups to use. And if we have fifty-five thousand dollars each year dedicated to this, we can replace the seating, we can, um, address the lighting and address the audio. So, his, um, description is, is in the packet as well. And it may be that it might be staged so that, because all three aren't needed, that he might do a portion of the seating one year and then be able to use those seats to, as repair parts for some of the other seating. And basically, over the course of the three years, the, the auditorium in the middle high school that the community uses will be, um, will be renovated.
So Nancy, on, on this one and probably, and also on the, the three-year, it comes to the middle high school bathrooms, can, can John or somebody do a specific plan of what the three years is and what we get done in year one versus year two versus year three? So that, because unfortunately, we can't go and ask for a commitment of fifty-five thousand each year, so.
Right, yeah, year at a time.
Right, so the concern would be if they could give us fifty-five thousand this year, but it's not gonna, but it's gonna give us some piecemeal thing, is it worth it if they can't commit to the hundred and fifty? So what I'd like to see is a, a plan or a, whether it's a project plan or something that says, this is what the fifty-five thousand in year one is gonna be, this is what the fifty-five thousand in year two, and this is in year three. And I would caution that we need to have that plan be in increments that are not completely dependent upon other pieces. So, we can't do, can't do something in year one that then forces us to have to have the money in year two.
Okay.
And the same thing with the bathroom.
Okay.
Like, if we're gonna, if it's twenty thousand dollars, what's that twenty thousand dollars? And if that means we do one bathroom or two bathrooms entirely, that's what it is. And in year two, we try and do another one or two. Or if it's replace all the tile in all the bathrooms, and that's the twenty thousand in year one, then that's what we do. For the same reason, because I think we're gonna have to be asking for a specific project base. This is exactly what the money's gonna go for, and this is what I think it will be this year.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I couldn't make last week's meeting, but I was gonna make a suggestion, um, treat talk, I don't know if these are prioritized, but to me, I think that the, the Clyde Brown roof would, in my opinion, go first.
Yeah, they're not in any priority.
Yeah, but I, I think when people pick these up, especially when they're numbered, they might think of it that way. So, and the Clyde Brown roof is first, then the instructional resources. And then I think the others here are probably tied for third, but, um, if I had to choose, it might be backup storage servers. Then the, um, then the bathrooms, and you guys know that I really want the bathrooms, so. So put a fourth, I don't really wanna do that, but you kinda have to prioritize, and then the auditorium, just based on. But that's my opinion.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure we can wait for the Clyde Brown lease. In fact, I was looking at the, some of the justification, and one of the, one of the statements says. Sorry. The statement says.
Really bad roof.
I, I guess.
Really bad roof.
It's better than that. It's, uh.
Fifty gallons, fifty gallons per hour.
Stains on it.
No problem.
Yes, um, it's embarrassing and unfortunate that any child who tries to teach him is to walk by ninety-six gallon barrels that have hoses or plastic trucks dripping from the ceilings to collect water. This is something that needs to go forward, even if there is no new Clyde Brown being built. If we, if we are concerned about rain or snow, we are in the wettest part of the year, we cannot wait until March eighth, May eighth, to hope that it gets passed, then to take another month to fix it. We need to find fifty-eight thousand dollars. I'm gonna make a motion right now, I know we're not done with the law, but I'm gonna make a motion that we fund up to fifty-eight thousand dollars, assuming that there's based on some sort of testament. I believe that the last move was fifty-five, fifty-six. Up to fifty-eight thousand dollars to repair the Clyde Brown roof. And we will find the money, where we need to find the money, but we can't wait. And I don't wanna put this up as a warrant. There's enough justification, it's snowing, it's snowing and raining today, and we are about to get eight to twelve inches of snow. Not that we're gonna repair it between now and Thursday, but we can't wait until May. We need to do this now.
I'll second that motion and question.
Move in second, further discussion.
Um, these repairs, are they in the same area that we just replaced the roof, or is this another area?
Mr. Chair, if I remember correctly, we had the meeting with the admin team and Mr. Angler went through where the town problem issues are. It's not in the areas that we repaired in the classroom wings. It's the flat area where the cafeteria, it's the cafeteria, it's over the boiler room, it's over the prep area, it's over the music room, it's in all of those areas of the school. Um, I would also, I had the same comment as Mr. Catalano. Um, I think we had some discussions initially about funding this out of the operational budget when we met with the admin team because of the concern that we had about the time of year that we're in and the situation and the latest round of work that the team had to do in order to be able to control the leaking in those areas. Um, I do understand that there's been interim patches that have happened to that, but we still have an overall concern about the roof and that section of the building. So, I would definitely be in favor of us. I would like us to take a look at how we would fund it, um, tonight, if we can. I don't know if we have the ability to do that, but, um, I'm in favor of funding it. I'm imagining we would need a funding source as we put that motion forward, so. Just want us to have some discussion on that.
Nathan Discuris, what, what did it cost for these most recent repairs? Do we have a call back figure on, on that?
Um, they were not that costly because it was, um, ceiling cracks, and so it was patchwork.
Right.
Um, it was easy to identify where the, where the leaks were coming from. They were able to patch that. But this solution is a complete, um, he calls it a, um, I forget the, the name of it, but it's a, a filler that is flowable, rubberized flowable. So they have a method that they proposed where it coats the entire surface so we wouldn't continue to get the cracks that were, are currently causing it, so.
And just, just so we're clear, we were getting fifty gallons every half hour coming through.
Yeah, one, um, night, one night it was really coming in.
One night too many.
Yes, it was, um, you know, very dramatic. He, Mr. Angler was, you know, there and, um, immediately, the next day, got the, called the company to get them in that week to, you know, to, to address those facts. But it was significant that, that night.
But he's pretty positive this, this flowing membrane will hopefully do the, do the job. He's hopeful.
It's, it's a technology that, that, um, we, the vendor is a reliable one that we've used over the years and we, it is a new solution, so I, I guess we have confidence that the vendor is recommending a solution that's, that's going to work. Um, it's about twice as much as we had anticipated. And I'll ask, um, Mr. Angler to do some, you know, investigating to see if they have other roofs that they've done it on, so we can check it out and see if it's worked.
Mr. Chair?
Um, but the one thing I think that our committee knows, but I will say for the viewing public, is even with the investment of the fifty-eight thousand dollars, there's still an acknowledgement of the general state of the roof overall. Um, this is a solution for a portion of the roof. We invested at the beginning of the school year, um, a separate portion of the roof. This is a solution that I think, as Mr. Angler stated at our last meeting, um, where we had a session with the administrative team, that this is something that we believe will significantly help with the issues that we're having with the roof, but that the, the roof is in such a state in that area that, um, the repair itself, it won't be guaranteed. There would likely be investment coming as a follow-on to this. Um, so, we do have the project for our new facility for Clyde Brown. This is one of many investments that we would need to make to that facility that would be recurring should that project not go forward.
Basically lipstick on a pig.
I, I don't, I don't wanna hold it, I don't wanna hold up the con, the vote because we don't have a funding source right now. I understand that we, we need to do this, and even if this means we remove things in the budget from choice and we free up money in the operating budget, I, I think, we don't wanna dip into choice all the time, but we ended last year with four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. We don't have a projected balance at the end of the year, but I know we've been pulling about three hundred out.
I don't think it's that much, I thought we were in the twos.
We were, we were low at two hundred, but we have a weak, you know, roof.
No, I don't.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to voting yes, go ahead.
I was, I was gonna finish up that, we don't have, we don't have what we, we will end up, it's very inflated. Last year, we put out four hundred and fifty. We need to, we need to, I get it Denise, and I don't, but we can find fifty-six thousand dollars. We may have to be creative on what we do, but.
No, I'm gonna remember that, I do want us to be cognizant and also to speak to the public about as we make a choice, because we have to, to invest sixty thousand dollars in the roof, what that can impact on the other side of that.
And why can't we put the money up now and then seek it through a warrant? I mean, using the rationale that if this is an emergency, it needs to be done and.
Reimburse ourselves.
Exactly.
Cover operations, is that what we can do?
So we could, we, we could get the final call, we could do it, we could put it up as a warrant and say, we incurred this cost and ask the town to fund it, fund it through. What we in essence be doing is asking for an increase to our budget for fifty-eight thousand for this year to cover the fact that we incurred this cost.
You've already tapped into our operating budget.
Right, we've, we've covered it, we've covered it, it was a, it was a, it's a unexpected emergency cost that we funded out of necessity. And we would be asking the town to reimburse our budget. And we would be asking the town to reimburse our budget for that cost.
And if they didn't fund it, then we would have to cut somewhere else. Be forced to cut somewhere else, or spend from choices already prepared.
Ninety-one days until spring comp.
No, I agree. I think we have to, I think we have to do this, and we have to do it now. And if we want to still put it on as a warrant article, we can do that as well. It would be, we would change the wording, and it would be, what we would, in essence, what we would be asking for is to increase the FY seventeen budget by fifty-eight thousand dollars to do the unforeseen expenditures.
Mr. Chair, I'll amend my motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we, authorizing superintendent, start the process of repairing the Clydesdale roof in the amount up to fifty-eight thousand dollars. We will pay for it, we will pay for it out of the operating budget and with a, putting forward a warrant to adjust our operating budget in FY seventeen by up to fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Move in second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I would also entertain a motion regarding the other eight items that are on here. Do we want to take a vote now to send them all up? The warrant officially closes. Again, I would, I guess, I would stipulate that I would take the per year out of the two articles that are on here that say per year. I'd remove those, and these are one-year costs. It would probably be helpful on the instructional materials to pick a number.
Yes, if I may speak to that just briefly, as those of you who were at the meeting with the administrative team, the twenty thousand dollars is the minimum we need to purchase the rest of the science materials needed to align to the next-generation science standards that Massachusetts has adopted last year. We did not put forth that warrant for curriculum materials last year. It was, we were able to fund and purchase some materials with some end-of-year money to get us rolling at the beginning of this year and have instruction happening. And the twenty thousand dollars would be the minimum to get the rest of the lab materials, its hands-on, activity-based, inquiry-based, science instruction. But as we spoke at our last meeting, the instructional needs and the resources, the resources needed in the district are much greater than that. That's a bare minimum. We have, as is written up in the description, we have consumable aspects to our math curriculum for the student journals with everyday math. We have software that we, in order to personalize education, we would like to purchase so that kids have computer-assisted and personalized pathways of learning that would help with our personalization. So there is, we can, you know, maybe come up with a description, a detailed description of the twenty thousand dollars of science materials, plus perhaps a minimum of the not knowing, you know, how much free cash there might be of either ten or twenty thousand more of other types of instructional materials, but.
So I guess I would spin it a different way and say, whatever number, whatever number is on here, maybe we do break it out into two, whatever number is on here is itemized. And not picking a number based on how much free cash is, but picking the number with the full itemization of what the, what they relate to so that we can speak to exactly what would be purchased with it. And here's what it would take to purchase this, and here's what it would take to purchase this. What I'm, what I'm not anticipating happening is there being a, we'll just give you twenty thousand dollars and you guys go buy what you need. It's gonna be.
However, if you could break down this eighty thousand, there's gotta be a way to come up.
Yeah, no, I think there's a way, and I guess the, so I guess the only, yeah, just, if it's eighty thousand or whatever that number gets to, have the individual specific things that would be purchased with a value, and obviously it wouldn't go in this piece, but, and prioritize. So if the twenty thousand is the highest priority, that's the highest priority. And if we got up to twenty thousand, we would purchase this if we.
They're forty.
Right. Because I think what we're gonna find is that they're gonna look at this eighty thousand and say, that's your top priority, we'll give you twenty thousand dollars for that.
I think we'll also find that we put a sixty, we just put an additional sixty thousand must fund out there. I'm not sure they're gonna be going much below the line. We may have other necessity.
Well, they could also say, they could also say that you are paid for sixty. We're not gonna use free cash, and we'll use free cash if we're.
That's fine, I'm just.
You would fund something up.
Could we, just on these last four items, could we list them in priority? And often come, they always ask us what priorities and often times we say. Can we just decide that now, so we can let them have their process? Does the group agree with my suggestion of instructional resources now would be number one? Then the bathrooms, or, and I said storage servers. I don't know which one's priority there.
I would, I'd like to sway on that one. The storage service needs to be either one or two. If we're gonna fund the roof out of our own pocket and put it up here as a, I mean, if we still put the roof warrant on, then roof would probably still be one, only because of the type that it is.
Right, okay. Then you would put servers in front of instructional resources?
No, it's still put instructional resources there. And I just put servers in back of instructional resources.
And then bathrooms, and then the auditorium. I don't know if the group would agree with that, right? I will say, I've been complaining about the bathrooms. I've been on school plenty for five and a half years.
I've never told a bathroom complaint before.
And paratriches.
Yeah, I don't have a strong preference between which order on the list, the bathrooms, auditorium, though. I think there's two, I think there's an element to the auditorium conversation that it is more of a town-wide resource. And so there's some, I believe that there's an argument that putting money into the auditorium benefits the community as a whole much more than an investment in the bathrooms do. Not that we don't need it, but I think there's, there may be more of a powerful argument to invest in the auditorium if it's seen as.
I agree with Jim's priorities. Let them, if they want to reach out and put the auditorium up one or two, that's fine. The bathrooms have been an issue here, and the auditorium's a mess too, but I, it's somewhat semantical at this point, but I think we should put that on higher.
We need it all, let's say that.
That's fair, that is a fair point.
One, one B, one C.
And to be honest, this is five articles. That's all we're putting forward. In historical terms, the list that went in May was in the ten to fifteen inch. So this is not a, you know, huge list to begin with, to worry about priority.
So Mark, just to clarify, even though we're putting up, we're not putting per year, we're putting up cost per, for the year, but you're still looking for a three-year plan, the breakdown of the three-year.
If it's, yeah, if it's a three-year plan, at a minimum, yes, one three-year plan, but at a minimum.
So we should write that plan up and not just put twenty thousand dollars. We should say, it's twenty thousand dollars this year, and we, here's what it's gonna pay for, and then year two, we're gonna come back again with twenty thousand.
We've come up with a three-year plan for each of these elements.
It'll look like it costs sixty grand at this point.
Our intention is to fund them all, but we have to break it down, we have twenty thousand this year.
Twenty, twenty, this year we'll do this. Fifty-five, this year we'll do this.
Yep. So then we have that back up.
No.
So it's, the roof is one, instructional materials is two, the storage server is three, the bathrooms are four, the auditorium is five.
And anyone that goes to town meeting knows the auditorium needs these types of things, but as soon as they go to the bathroom, they'll see it.
They know that thing.
Well, I mean, you make the same argument that the community utilizes the bathrooms. I mean, we have football games, we have travel basketball, we have, you know, people in and out, and this, you know, we don't have much, many bathrooms, you know, so they're overused.
And they're beyond, you can't clean them to the point that.
If you try?
Can't be cleaned.
Let's get in there.
Actually, ask Mark how many texts I sent him. Yes, I do clean them.
I picked up tonight.
When I go to a basketball game.
All right, so it's been moved in seconded, that we sent all those up in that order?
Yes.
Yes.
Did we make a motion?
No, I don't think.
Why don't we just start?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we send up the four must-fund warrant articles and the five additional warrant articles to the think com for their consideration.
Second.
We've moved in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I've already talked about the bus lease stabilization, the FY budget process. So we were all at the last tri-board meeting, talking about the budget process. One of the things that we saw, and I actually got today, was the proposal, the written proposal for that ClearGov product. It would be, if we do it between now and March thirty-first, we'll receive a twenty-five percent discount, which would bring the one-year annual cost of four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. The implementation plan would take about two to three weeks and would include pulling our, from the accounting system, pulling the chart of accounts and loading it into their system so that they could have a feed made sure we had it mapped. They would also do a training session, either a virtual training session or come and sit anywhere from a half hour to an hour. We could determine how many people have access to the backend to be able to build reports and do things ad hoc. Obviously, anybody from the public would be able to drill, we'd be able to, we would, we would determine as well how far into the drill could be, you could get from outside. So I also confirmed, I know that Jim McCaffrey is talking with the board of selectmen this week to try and get, to try and move forward on the town side. But his conversation, when I spoke with him, he thought that, that he may not be able to do it unless he can get the price for the town, which is about sixty-five hundred, not fifty-six hundred dollars into next year's budget. So when I talked with the individual from ClearGov today, I did get confirmation from him, and he said he could put it in writing that if we move forward quicker than the town did, the town would still get their twenty-five percent discount. And as long as the town purchased and got in before our first year was up, so they've got a year, we would all, we would both get the combo, the bundle discount of fifteen percent going forward. So.
Yeah, it's true.
So it basically would be four thousand, four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for us to get the subscription and get the implementation in. They're ready, we can have our own decision.
Just for the viewing audience, the technology allows us to look at things much more strategically in a way we've never been able to compare our expenses to other towns and districts in the state. Really, really online tool. To me, it seems worthy of investment. Do we have a sense of where we could fund it from?
Probably the same place that we are talking about spending the roof from. Obviously, this is a much smaller dollar value. So I think it would be easier to come up with places to move, to shift budget items or revolving accounts or things to cover this. So I'm less concerned about finding, finding a way to cover it.
Well, maybe we'll save somebody on the roof, right?
Yeah.
Let's be hopeful.
I mean, I truly think that from a communication and a, I know some people like the word transparency, others don't, but a transparency in terms of being able to see comparative information, see information in one place that's very concise. I mean, we all saw it, and in fact, that, that meeting was on TV. It was a selectman's meeting from, I forget, last Thursday, I think it was, no, last Wednesday. And they just pulled it up on the screen, and you could see our, all of the information. For the school, it's all of the information and reports that we provide to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So what this company does is it, it has downloaded all of that data from the state, which is all comparable data for every town, because everybody has to report in the same manner. So it is consistent, if nothing else. There may be tweaks in terms of how, you know, staffing models and things of that nature, what, what job titles are called what, but everything is consistent, and you can compare yourself to anybody in the state that you want, any, any group. They did it for the DART groups, they built in it geography one. In fact, it shows what's our administrative, you know, our administrative ratios, our teacher ratios, every stat you could think of that if we tried to do, we'd have to, you know, the manual exercise that it would take to do it at times, it's crazy. It showed exactly how much we are spending less than other comparable towns. And also, we pulled it up, because there was an app, and you could pull it up on your phone. It also shows from, on the town side, because they had pre-populated all the information for the school and the town, that our town's debt capacity is fifty-one percent of what, it's at fifty-one percent of what comparable towns are. So what we are spending, what our debt payments are, is half of what comparable towns are. So in terms of, and they used it in the terms of, obviously, what we, it speaks to investment in infrastructure and how.
Deferred maintenance.
Deferred maintenance pieces, so. So I think, and again, like I said, Jim McCaffrey is very much looking to get the town side to get it up and running. I just think he's trying to figure out if they can do it now or if they need to wait and try and. I just think he's trying to figure out if he can do it now or if he needs to wait and try and build it into a budget.
It also allows the average resident to look at, if you pay ten thousand dollars a year and taxes are five thousand, a bunch of that money goes toward education, how much of it goes for police, fire, compared to other towns. It's useful not just to a planning board, like ours, Norman Dowling, but a planning committee like this one or the Board of Selectmen, but just to the average resident, it's very informative.
Yeah, I told you, taxes, you know, how it compares per capita to everyone else and, yeah.
To someone moving to Millis, they do the research.
So go ahead.
Yes, are you looking for a motion?
If someone would like to make one.
I, I move that we fund cleargov.com, that online technology, I believe bills forty-four hundred dollars, is that right?
Forty-one twenty-five.
Forty-one twenty-five, sorry. And you have to determine the funding source.
I think that we would need to.
Mr. Chair, we, we do have, and I think it would be appropriate for facility rental.
To be funded from facility rental.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I will follow up with the representative from ClearGov tomorrow. I told them I'd get back to them and we will, I'll have him coordinate with the NTIA for all and we'll move the process forward.
Would you also just let Jim Neville know at the board?
Yeah, yeah, I'll let them know too, yep. All right, subcommittee reports.
The Elementary School Building Committee Communication Subcommittee has worked very hard over the last couple of weeks, meeting several times and in fact, has drafted a update to be sent to all residents via school listservs, town listservs, Facebook posts, newspapers, the Millis Medway News, and whatever other mechanism possible to, and blast emails to give an update on what's going on. There is an Elementary School Building Committee meeting on Thursday and at that meeting, the budget number will come up. And then the forums start next Thursday, there is a forum at Town Hall, room two twenty-nine. All of this will be in the, the update and that will be the first of, right now, three scheduled forums. We're also looking for individuals to host copies. We're gonna have, we're going to present here on three eight, we're going to present at the Board of Selectmen on, the next Monday and then the following Monday, the following Wednesday, we're gonna meet at the FinCom. Three seven here, I'm sorry, three seven here. And then, so it would be three thirteen at Board of Selectmen and then three fifteen at the FinCom. There's also a plan to pull together another meeting for many, all the town boards and committees. So there will be a lot of information coming out and it will start on Friday morning at five AM. That's it for the school building, there's a working group meeting tomorrow, but the, the monthly meeting where the budget is set is Thursday, that's an important meeting. It appears that it'll be televised.
Could snowfall impact any of that?
Yes.
I, I mean, other than the fact that there's a meeting on Thursday night, are there decisions that would, are planning to be made that night that would need to be done?
It's not a vote, it's a, it's, it's presenting the budget. So no, it's not a, we have to make a vote, it is what it is, it's coming back and that would be it. So no, yes, potentially that, that meeting could be in flux, but, and whatever we do, whenever we have that formal meeting where we discuss the budget, the process and the apparatus that we put into place is just ready to go.
But if it's canceled, you don't need to necessarily have it, or you just find a way to squeeze it in prior to the following?
That would be up to, I believe the chair is away next week, so it may be in the best interest to have that meeting. I don't know if they could move it to Friday, I don't know what the rules are on open meetings. If there's a cancellation due to a snow emergency, I don't know. We need to have that meeting sooner than later because there's a forum next Thursday. We need, we can't have another, we can't have a community-wide forum without a budget number. There's no need to have that meeting.
Maybe what we could do since we're Tuesday and we just don't have enough notice, we book something for Friday. Make sure everyone can make it, book something for Friday if we need to.
Post tomorrow.
You know what, we can talk about that tomorrow at nine AM, yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
Okay, correspondence?
Actually, one, Mr. Chair, one other thing, I sent an email probably in the eleven-dollar Fridays meeting. I was at a meeting last Monday where there was a discussion about field magnets. And we were glaringly not there and I don't know how that happened, but.
I don't believe it was right.
I suspect we were not invited.
No, where was you?
He was there. He may have just shown up.
Wow. So on the board, so who told them that it was on the agenda?
Okay, fair, that's a good point. So we were not there and we should have been there. And there's a lot of discussion about field use, overuse, who's paying for what. And they didn't ask me to speak, I wasn't prepared to speak, so I wasn't going to speak. But there is, we need to, at least internally, we need to have that information available. So if and when there is a formal request or a discussion that has to be had, we should have that, so. It was a little troubling that they're having a conversation where we're using fields and there was no, no inclination to invite us to that meeting, but that doesn't mean we can just put our head in the sand. We have to kind of pull that information together and have, have something available when we have it available.
Mr. Chair, I think this goes back to our need for tri, tri-board meetings so that we can address priorities in the town. If the town decides across those boards that fields aren't priority, then we have to come up with a plan, right? It's part of the bigger picture. And so it sort of doesn't make sense that they didn't invite us since they're leaning in the direction of the tri-board working collaboratively across boards, but that is what it is.
All right, there, I think that that agenda item was brought by members, members of the old fields committee and.
Okay.
So it wasn't Board of Selectmen initiative, they were, it was a request by the residents to be on there, and so. But, your point is correct, if there, if the larger discussion is gonna develop about, which started towards the tail end of the whole field project, which was, do we look at all of the fields and come up with a plan between labor and other resources of maintaining all of these fields and having it on a consolidated schedule? Yes, that we may do it collectively.
All of it's, all, all of it's been done, all the legwork, so it's just a matter of putting it together and re, readdressing it.
But if they're gonna have it as their agenda, they have, they can, someone can bring it forward, but if they're gonna have the discussion, it's incumbent upon them to make sure the right people are invited and have a seat at the table and are prepared. That's, that's above that.
Correspondence?
Just to include it in your packets, what we've announced, that the Millis Public Schools has once again been moved to the D District honor roll and you've heard that we are one of only twenty-five high schools in the state of Massachusetts that has that distinction. That's it.
School committee announcements? Go straight on. We have no older new business, we're not going to executive session. Our next meeting will be the twenty-eighth and the one subsequent to that will be March seventh and then the twenty-first.
Thank you, resign.
Second.
Moving to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.